Yes.
Does it feel any different today with the graduate build?
That was my second and last one.
Yeah, my first and last one.
Annie Hill. We'll figure it out. Whatever we did last time, didn't it? Didn't we figure it out or did we have to pinch it?
No, that's all right, it's fine. We just...
I can't remember how we did it.
So you were at 11:30, right?
Yeah.
So I think what we did is I had my sixth grader who spoke in the first. Mrs. Spalding? They did. So sixth grade actually did a field day. They did a field day, then they had their 10:30, then they went back to the field.
That's what happened. That, you're right, that's what we did, okay.
And then the second half of the Michael went the second after you.
Okay. But I didn't know what you had planned for the second half of the day either. For the whole day for that matter, so. And you've got graduation tomorrow. Do you, are you guys all like reserved and set up and all that? Because they're so shorthanded, you better get on that train if you have to.
He knows that it's happening.
Okay, I haven't talked to him. Is Rodney even around? No, he was away Thursday morning.
He knows that tomorrow night is graduation and he knows I need the same amount of chairs that I had on Tuesday.
Alright.
But now that I know I can use the music chairs, I don't even know we have.
Yeah, they're so much better, right? Like, and they're already on the cart, that's why I was like, you know.
Remember, this is only my second year here. I don't know the little in the left.
No, I know. I, I hope you'd, I didn't think you'd be, you never seem to mind when I walk over, but I was like, we and those are newer, that's a newer purchase, but we did it because they were just, we had a treasure.
That was fine.
Yeah.
That was perfect.
Yeah. Alright. Excellent.
I'll wait. We're about to start.
Ed, I think I need some more money before we're done with the year. I think, I'm, I'm gonna need to talk to you. No, no, no. Really. I gotta, I think it's mostly PD stuff, so I probably gotta talk to Patrice about it. I was hoping to get some more furniture for my, um, in-school office space.
The first thing somebody said to me
because I've got like kind of the mismatch
as I was walking back.
Chairs for my ISI. And I can get some better stuff, but I need, it probably is gonna cost like 21 bucks.
You're gonna be here soon enough. Please don't rush it.
Still my favorite business.
Enjoy the time.
Yeah.
What?
And we're done, sweet.
So just picking you up on my shoulders and now it's... She usually does. Do you know why there's this many people here?
Oh, I know. Well, so I couldn't, so don't take it personally.
I'm, I'm leggy, but no torso.
Anybody else wanna sign up? There's a sign-up sheet for public comment.
Okay. All right, well, welcome everybody to the Newport School Board meeting of June 9th. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Rhonda?
Rhonda Callum King here.
Bill?
Bill Wilkinson here.
Bert?
Bert Spalding Senior here.
Steve?
Steve Morris here.
And Jenna Darling here. Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Considered republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. That brings us to adjustments to the agenda. The only one I have, um, is there's been a request to go into non-public under 91A32I. Consideration of matters relating to the preparation for and carrying out of emergency functions, including the training to carry out such functions. Uh, any other adjustments to the agenda?
I just, I will have two hires. Bring forward.
Okay.
And I will also introduce the new BA who happens to be here too.
Oh, okay. All right, why don't we? Yeah, we'll just do all of that under new. Okay. Alright. Any other adjustments?
There's a couple I'd like to propose.
Okay. You know what? How about this? Let's motion the two that we have and then we'll come back. Does that sound good? Alright, so I need a roll call vote for entering into non-public and to have two new hires and to intro the BA. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, a roll call vote for these adjustments. Rhonda?
Rhonda Callum King, aye.
Bill?
Bill Wilkinson, aye.
Bert?
Bert Spalding Senior, aye.
Steve?
Steve Morris, aye.
And Jenna Darling, aye. Okay. Bill, you're up. What adjustments do you have?
The first one, um, I'd like to propose a permanent adjustment, uh, to the order in which we do things. So I would move that we separate administration, uh, communication from board communication, bringing administration communication up to follow public comment.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote. Rhonda?
Uh, Rhonda Callum King, aye.
I'm sorry, I did not ask for discussion. Would you like any discussion?
I don't really have any. I see where he's going with it. It allows them to leave before everything goes on and on and on and on. I don't have a problem with that. They have jobs all morning.
Okay. Alright, so Rhonda was aye'd. Bill?
Bill Wilkinson, aye.
Bert?
Uh, no.
Steve?
Steve Morris, aye.
Jenna Darling, aye. Any other adjustments?
Um, I would move that we eliminate Roman numeral 10 from the agenda.
Uh, the motion is to remove, uh, item 10, board chair removal. Okay. Um, is there a second?
A second, aye.
And discussion?
Yes. Um, I think it's I'm gonna be frank, both obnoxious and ridiculous. However, I think we go ahead and vote on it. So leave it there.
Okay. Any other discussion? Bert?
Uh, B E D D R, your policy. Rule of order. Item number five. No one may speak unless he or she has been recognized by the chair. A board member may interrupt only to state a point of order. The chair will then recognize the member for the limited purpose of stating the point of order. That being said, this chair issue began at the first school board meeting after my election to the board, April of 2021. I was recognized to speak by the chair Jenna Darling. As I spoke on the ethics and its faults, another person, not recognized by the chair, badgered her way in. When she was done, I asked to be recognized by the chair, so as to continue. I was recognized to speak again by the chair Jenna Darling. As I begin to, began to speak, the same person badgered her way in again. She was not restricted by the chair. At that point, I left the meeting. The chairperson had not done the job. I'm gonna read B E D D R again. No one may speak unless he or she has been recognized by the chair. A board member may interrupt only to state a point of order. The chair will then recognize the member for the limited purpose of stating the point of order. On May 12th, 2022, yes, last month, I was recognized to speak by the chair Jenna Darling. As I spoke, four people, at once, tried to overrun my words. The chair, the superintendent, Patrice, and Mr. Wilkinson. All four in violation of the policy. Must be our policies have no force in effect. The leaders themselves are either ignorant or their stature separates them from the rest. The ignorance of the listener will not extinguish my right to speak. It will motivate me to use all lawful speech to educate them as they try to oppress the failures in our school system. The chair needs to step down. Regardless of whether you want to hear what I have to say, the First Amendment protects that right to say it. It is in fact the greatest motivator for the First Amendment. The words you don't wanna hear are the words that I have a right to say. So therefore, if I offended you, it had bothered you, and it brings this school district to a conclusion where it heads in a different direction, then I will continue to offend you. When in fact, it comes together and it is right, and we do it right, and we do not put on this show, then I'd be more than great, great, more than willing to back off. But until then, the policies have not been followed by the chair at two meetings in violation of the process and my rights to speak.
Any other discussion?
Um, so my thoughts on, uh, making the motion to have it taken off the agenda. I would assume if there is a process or a policy in place, um, to have the board chair removed, that policy would exist on the district website with all of the rest of the policies. And if there is not a policy in place to have the board chair removed, then I don't see why we need to discuss the process of removing the board chair because there's not a policy for doing so. So that's my justification. It just seems like it's taking up time on an already full agenda.
Steve?
I think-
And then we'll vote on whether or not just to remove, put the agenda or talk about it later.
Steve, go ahead. I think something like this doesn't necessarily require a board removal vote. What it requires is, hey, there's a policy in place. Try not to overspeak anyone. If you do, all of us need to be aware of it. Call a point of order to let the original individual called upon to finish their talk and then you can talk afterwards. And I think that in the one instance from last month, it was in reaction to words that were construed as an insult to an individual and people were rightly offended in their own eyes. And so they addressed it and the proper thing would have been just be a point of order. It's still Mr. Spalding's floor to let him complete. I don't think it requires the removal of the board chair. It reminds us to be vigilant of the order, which is wait until it's our turn to speak and give each other the courtesy of finishing our speech.
Rhonda?
I'd also, um, be okay with moving it to the first and getting it out of the way. Just voting on it. But I would also like to point out if a board chair interrupted somebody who was speaking, then they no longer had the floor because they've been stopped by a board chair. If they have the right to start or end something.
Alright, well, the motion on the floor is whether or not to remove it from the agenda. So let's take the roll call vote for that. So Rhonda?
Um, no, I'm good leaving it there.
Bill?
Aye.
Uh, Bert?
I'm leaving it there.
Okay. And Steve?
Leave it there.
There you go. Alright. And I'm going to abstain. So it's fine. Alright, so that will remain on the agenda. Alright. Any other-
Could I make an adjustment to move it to the front and get it out of the way?
Okay. Is there a second to move item 10 to, uh, item 1?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, all of what I said just a few minutes ago. If in fact, you, the chairperson, will not abide by the policies, what are the rest of us to do? It is a, it is a responsibility that the chair has and the chair should recognize. That doesn't necessarily mean the chair has to go, but it means the chair has to understand that I have a right to speak regardless. And if it is offensive to an employee, I pointed out to you in the information that was given to the board by the New Hampshire Department of Education that in fact, there is not a wall between the speakers, the board members, and personnel. For a matter of fact, one judge put it quite succinctly, that it is contrary to most of what we think should happen at public meetings. So, Jenna, I asked you if you wanted to be chair, the first meeting after the votes, and you said yes. It has the responsibility that goes with it. And it's right here in black and white, but yet twice. So how many times will it take, Virginia, before you read the policy and actually abide by it?
Any other discussion? Roll call vote to move it up to number one. Rhonda?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Bert?
Yeah.
Steve?
Aye.
And I will abstain. Okay. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay. That brings us to public comment. So, a couple of things. Um, I do need a board vote because I have nine people signed up for public comment and because the changes to B E D H, from my understanding, um, were tabled from the last meeting, we are still operating under the other policy. So I do need a vote to let nine people speak instead of five. Um, and also, uh, Mr. Oberhauffer contacted me earlier this week and asked that I would read a statement. So, um, I would motion that I allow everyone to speak, uh, who has signed up this evening and that I read Mr. Oberhauffer's statement.
Second.
Okay. I need a roll call for that. So Rhonda? Uh, Bill?
Aye.
Bert? Steve?
Aye.
And Jenna Darling, aye. Okay. Alright, I will start with Mr. Oberhauffer's statement. Okay. "I am very sorry that I could not attend this evening's meeting, in person or virtually. I did not want this meeting to pass without my introducing myself as the new co-president of the Newport Teachers Association. Many of you have met me either around town, at school events, or during one of my many visits to your meetings over the past four years. I teach math and physics at the high school and coach the golf team. I truly consider it an honor to teach in Newport. I work alongside an amazing cast of teachers, the overwhelming majority of which are dedicated to their jobs, who in extent almost beyond words. That these teachers would trust in me to represent their professional interests is personally gratifying. The Newport School District is fortunate to employ them and I am honored to help them advance their mission to educate and guide our community's youth. It is not my intention to ignore or sugarcoat some of the significant challenges which face us all. In particular, the high turnover in administration, faculty, and staff is draining, both emotionally and fiscally. We must address this together as an issue of climate and culture. Some sense of stability must be found and clear lines of authority and communication reinforced. For my part, I commit to being open, honest, polite, and engaged in finding solutions that work for all concerned. And I look forward to my new role in the Newport School District and the extended Newport community. May we be forward focused on a brighter future. Respectfully, Mr. Ed Oberhauffer." Alright. Uh, Lucy? You are up next.
Uh, I have excellent hearing.
Make sure you state your name.
Oh. I heard that. My name is Lucy Wells. I'm a citizen of Newport, business owner. And, uh, I will say that it's very difficult for myself and others here to hear anything you folks are saying. So if you believe what you're saying is important and pertinent, please know that we're not hearing it. That may be true of these nice folks here as well. I don't know, there's, there's a sound of a fan. I don't know if the fan is critical in case any fertilizer goes its way. But perhaps if the fan could be lowered in volume or turned off for a while, when you see us fainting, it could be turned back on. That is not what, all of which I came here to say. I came here to say, among other things, there, this school system, last I knew, had a policy regarding bullying. And I would very much like the school board to print out and distribute that policy. For those who are interested, I would like it read aloud. I would like to know if it pertains to students or to adults as well. And if it does pertain to adults, does it pertain to people on the school board or those of us sitting here who might feel critical of the school board? I think it is very important to have this understanding in this climate we have in this country in which children who are bullied celebrate their 18th birthday by going out and getting weapons that literally decapitate 10-year-olds. So, I think in our part as citizens of Newport, it would be important to put families at ease if there was an enforceable bullying policy, excuse me, that did not put staff people, students, parents, students who are growing into 18-year-olds. If there was a policy that was understood and approved or perhaps reviewed and altered some. But we can't, we cannot wait for our elected representatives at other levels of our government. We're counting on you folks to make sense of what, what safety issues we can put in place here in Newport and neighboring towns for our children. So, that's the main reason I came here. But you can bet that if other issues pop up, and I won't be allowed to speak, I will be appearing rather agitated in the audience and I am not caring, so please know that. I thank you for the privilege of having for us a public comment period. And, and, uh, I myself am looking forward to hearing anything any of you might have to say. I also, one third thing I would like to speak about, 'cause I tend to do that. Uh, my husband Brad Sears, for several years, was the auto tech instructor here in Newport. He was pulled out of retirement to do that and the town, the students who worked with him, I believe, were, were, uh, came home smarter. And, uh, he is 87 years old, not doing too well. He lives in Florida where his geezer dog and the weather has kept him alive. Uh, but he's not doing too well. And if anybody wants to know how to, uh, send him a note, I know how to do that. He also is on Facebook as Brad Sears. And he, uh, he also knows a lot about building and designing auto tech facilities. He, in fact, is known beyond Newport in that field. He came to Newport having had a career in, uh, teaching all levels of auto techs in, uh, representing, um, folks for the TV show that he hosted, Last Chance Garage, during the 1980s. He's pretty good at what he does. He still is very articulate about that. And every chance he gets in Florida, he is a supporter of vocational education.
So-
You were very hard to interrupt, but I wanna make sure I also get an honor pretty close to our policy.
I have made that my career. So, uh, thank you for not trying very hard. I'm getting weaker.
Thank you, Lucy, I appreciate that. Okay. Um, Ms. Urban? I believe I'm reading?
Good evening. My name is Sharon Urban. I'm a 40-plus resident of Newport, uh, about three decades as a teacher here. And I've come basically because I believe that when we have things to say, we should come and say them. And I remember when I became a teacher and I was upset with something the school board had done, I came to speak and I said, "Just because I'm a teacher doesn't mean I lost my voice" or "my right." And Mr. Spalding said to me, "You're right. You should always feel free to come." And I do. I came tonight really to thank Mr. Minahan and Ms. Glancy for your time with us, for your positive leadership, and for accepting roles where you had targets on your back for blame. Because I think that there are two truisms I want to share tonight. And the first one is, remember, whenever you point a finger of blame, three fingers point back at you. And so we need to all remember that as school board members, as administrators, as parents, and as citizens, that when we point the finger of blame, we should be looking at the three fingers that point at us and say, "What have I done? What can I do? What will I do?" Because it is not right to blame an administrator, a teacher, a parent, or a kid for our bad scores and for- scores and for our frustration with our standing. It is appropriate for us to say, "What can we do as a community so we begin to all row the boat in the same direction instead of some people going this way, some people going that way, and some people going that way?" It is important that we begin to row all in the same direction. Our kids and their families need our support. Our teachers need our support. Our administrators need our support, and God knows, the school board needs our support. Because this is not an easy job and not an easy time we find ourselves in. It's damned hard. But if we could begin as a community to all row in the same direction, if we could make sure all children are fed and ready for school, if we could make the community and the neighborhood proud of our kids and proud of what they do, it will make a difference. The second truism, I was the peer outreach advisor for a couple of decades, and certainly we said never blame. The other thing we said was emotions are never right or wrong. Emotions are emotions. The behavior they generate is what is right or wrong. If we are frustrated and we take it out by berating people, belittering people, belittling people, being angry and unpleasant, that is behavior. The frustration is neither right nor wrong. I think we share it. And so I want to wish you well as you go forward. I hope our new folks who come in will find a community that stops pushing blame at individuals and starts looking at what we can do as a community. That's it.
Amen.
Ms. Johnson. Ms. Paula, where'd she go?
I'm here. Sorry, I am not a public speaker. Oh, I'm sorry. Paula Johnson. I'm a resident. I'm a parent. I'm an employee. Not a public speaker at all. Um, I want to start on a positive note. That graduation last night was awesome. Shannon Martin, you did a wonderful job putting that together. Sure, you had a little help, though.
A little bit.
A little bit, yeah. But it was great. It was fabulous. Good night, everything. Jennifer, you've done wonderful things for here. We're gonna miss you. Patrice, I love you. I've worked with you forever, and I'm sad to see you leave, but I can't blame you. Brendan, you've been awesome to work with. I'm sad you're leaving, but I don't blame you. I don't know how you did it as long as you did. Anyway, so, my speech today is for Mr. Spalding. You say you want to help the district to improve test scores, and you're here to help the children, but yet you spend your time and your efforts to bully out our superintendent who has been doing great things for our school district. He had one more year here, but you single-handedly changed all that because he wouldn't put something on the agenda. And now, Patrice, not only did you bully a really good encyclopedia salesperson, you bullied a principal out of the district who was doing great things and had great things planned, who always said, "Is this best for our children?" Now we need a new principal of the elementary school again. We currently have 19 open federal grants, and you bullied out the one person who wrote 16 of them. I don't know if you knew that. Patrice wrote all the grants, except for the ones Ed did and Brendan, too. All the new grants are starting to come in, but we don't have anyone to write them right now. Patrice was gonna start that. She's got two more weeks. It's not gonna happen. So, I don't know who's gonna write our federal grants that run this district. Millions of dollars is on hold right now. So, you also bullied out the curriculum director. I don't know if she knew Patrice was a curriculum director. Also, the Title IX, or is it Title X? Title IX coordinator. And also the person who has been overseeing the special education department for the last two years. Patrice did a lot. So, if you don't count the encyclopedia position, by losing Patrice, you've lost five positions that we have to fill. Four of those positions are not in the budget. I don't know how we're gonna find the money. I don't know how we're gonna find the people to do what she did. And now you're trying to bully out the chairperson of the school board. I was there for that meeting. Nobody meant to be hurtful by interrupting you. You just kept asking the same questions over and over again, and people were trying to clarify what they were saying. So, anyway, um, I don't see any of this as helping the district at all. Part of you thinks you don't want us to improve. I really wish you would use all your anger and your negativity to help the school district, not destroy it.
Lisa Frigno, resident, still co-president and first-grade teacher. First of all, I wanted to thank Ms. Martin, Ms. Fish, and Ms. Griffin for bringing the seniors over to Richards. It's really important for the little kids to see the end game, to see the graduates. And they all made posters. They were so excited. What I wasn't thinking about was the impact on the graduates. They were astonished that we had writing samples that they did from kindergarten and first grade. We all very proudly put up our class pictures. And I said to Shannon, "We love our kids." So, we were, we were excited to celebrate them, and I want to congratulate the class of 22. What an exemplary class. And that was, and I got to attend class night, too, and so proud of our kids. That's Newport. I first met Patrice Glancy seven years ago when she joined the team of Newport while we were attending a conference on competency-based education. Patrice had been a part of the team that transferred Sandown, Sanborn. She came to us with a strong foundation in transformational leadership. She came to us with what we would soon learn as Patrice's natural positivity and strong work ethic. A short six months after joining our team, she stepped in when Richards was in a crisis after the sudden departure of an elementary principal. Patrice created a sense of calm and order for staff who had been traumatized. When she took on the added responsibility, that allowed teachers to once again focus on teaching. It's not hyperbole to say, Patrice rescued the 2014-2015 school year. While continuing to help Newport District move forward, Patrice took on more leadership roles. She helped guide our teachers as they prepared for the PACE assessments, performance assessment testing. This was a completely new assessment model for which students moved beyond a simple computer or fill-in-the-bubble type test to applying what they've learned to solve real-world problems. Learning how to teach for this type of assessment, learning how to take this type of assessment was a huge undertaking for Newport teachers and staff and students. Patrice guided both the teachers and students through the process strategically, intelligently, and calmly. This was not an easy task. Changing the way we teach, learn, and assess is not comfortable, but Patrice gently pushed us out of our comfort zone because she knew it would be best for Newport students. Until the state DOE changed leadership and pulled PACE assessment, Newport students were showing growth with this model. During the spring of 2020, she was instrumental in developing a plan when we suddenly had to pivot to a completely different model of education during the pandemic. Patrice developed training for teachers who now had to provide education remotely. She once again was a calm and reassuring voice during a turbulent time. During the winter of 2021, Patrice once again stepped in when Richards was once again without a principal and once again created calm when our school was in crisis. I remember telling Dr. Minahan, "Having Patrice back at Richards felt like we could exhale again." Patrice took on the added responsibility of building administrator while also continuing to guide the district and oversee special education in all of the jobs Paula Johnson just talked about. She did this with her usual unflappable nature and smart problem-solving. Patrice jumped in and did whatever was required, including covering classrooms during a year in which we had no subs and a pandemic that will not quit. She shoveled snow because we were short on custodial staff and visited children's homes to deliver learning materials for students who could not come to school. Patrice is a creative and thorough problem solver. When charged with improving Richard's school, like the thorough researcher that she is, she listened to staff, she listened to students, she looked at other models, she researched best practices, and created a plan that would have been the turning point. She formed focus groups, guided the staff to research which reading and math programs had the best results with students similar to Newport students. She created a budget for the plan. It felt like despite our losing Dr. Minahan, we were still moving forward. We were hopeful, relieved, and re-energized. Now, it feels as though all of that air has been left out of that life raft, and we are once again adrift without leadership. Patrice Glancy and Rob Clark were the strongest team Richards has seen in 15 years. On a personal note, I want to thank Patrice for pushing this old lady teacher to learn more, to be better, to strive for excellence. I trust her, I respect her, and I would follow her anywhere. Thank you.
Melissa Mitchler, co-president for about another, I don't know, four days, five days of the NTA. I had hoped that last meeting would have been my last time at this podium, but here I am again. First, I would like to say congratulations to the class of 2022. It was a beautiful night for a great graduation, and I hear there is a wonderful picture of Shannon in the paper. As you can see, as you can see on the agenda, I am resigning. I want to read five questions. Are they implicitly or explicitly trying to gain power and control over you? Is the relationship mutually beneficial? Are you expected to sacrifice when they won't even compromise? Are you comfortable expressing yourself to them? And do they respect your needs? Are you happy most of the time, or is the relationship confusing or painful? These five questions are on a website on how to recognize a toxic relationship. Relationships aren't only between couples. Jenna, keep being you. I can't look at you. As you can see from the audience and the Zoom meeting, sorry, Brendan, um, NTA supports you and appreciates everything you do for, for our students of Newport. Don't let the unpopular opinion of one individual silence you. Bill, we first met at Toll and have had many great conversations. I appreciate your wisdom and your willingness to be open-minded. Rhonda, even though I think your days on the school board are numbered...
Look at the grin.
We have spent many days at negotiations, and I want to thank you for your many years of service and dedication to the students and taxpayers of Newport. Steve, I didn't agree with everything you had to say as a parent, but I have been very impressed with your open-mindedness as a board member. Please continue to keep the students of Newport as the main focus of everything you do. Bert, many times my husband and I have left meetings talking about the points you brought up that night, and many times I have agreed with what you were saying. I agree with you now that this district can do better. However, your approach is devastating this district. Anytime a contract or budget didn't pass, you were usually leading the way. Anytime there was a cut to the budget, you were usually leading the way. This behavior, as well-intended that you believe it is, is the reason Richards is 211 out of 211. It is these reasons Newport will struggle hiring and retaining teachers. I believe your intentions are good, but if you continue with your approach, Newport's students will continue to suffer. There is a resignation on tonight's agenda that is going to harm Newport. With Patrice leaving, I wonder what will happen to the plan she presented. I wonder how many teachers at Richards will leave as well. I wonder who will pick up all the pieces on her plate. She is the, she is one of the many administrators in this district that wears too many hats due to the level funding of education in Newport and due to budget cuts. Our 211 principal was just hired by a school in the top 100 because they recognize all that she has to offer. Lisa, there are no words. I can't look at you either. To the families of Newport, make sure you attend deliberative sessions and that you vote. This is how you keep education, you make education in Newport better. You make sure that our board is made up of people that are willing to be part of the solution and not just complain about the problem. Thank you for the opportunity I was given to serve this great town, its great students, and its great teachers.
It's my turn to speak now? Tim Beard. I wish I could bring this amount of people in. I try, I really do, but, uh, I don't get the success. But, uh, I don't know, I thought about a lot what I was gonna say, and honestly, I sat over there and still don't know what I'm gonna say. Jenna, you did a great job of graduation yesterday. I don't think we could have asked for a better day. The weather was absolutely amazing. The stories from the kids were amazing, and we need to figure out how to move this train forward because right now it's like watching a circus. And our kids deserve better. You can't keep losing 30 people a year. You can't keep going to meetings and just, "Oh, I got more resignations. Oh, got more resignations." Any business will fail if you keep doing that. The goal of this board has to be retention of our staff, and I think the first thing is this board has to get along and work as a team for our community and our kids because that's what our kids deserve, is the best. And I think we all agree that the kids in Newport deserve the best. We're so lucky. We have such a great town. Me and Steve do a show every morning, and the first part of it's always about Newport, and it's always positive stories. I go on the school's Facebook page, what's happened now, town, all these different things. It's so easy to find positive stories in Newport. When I started coming here two years ago, I came here for a certain reason, and as time went on, I learned more and more, I talked to more people. I was told by someone that I trust and respect that be part of the solution, not part of the problem, and I've tried to do that ever since then. This board needs to work together, and you're not always gonna agree on everything, but you can't just keep having meetings where it's just a fight back and forth, back and forth, and nothing gets done. It can't continue. Patrice, I'm sorry to see you go. I think that's a loss. There was a plan, now there's no plan. We have a new super coming in July. It's like, all right, that's positive, like, move forward. Now we have to fill this position. Eventually, it's not gonna be able to find people to fill these positions, then what? Board members are gonna start teaching? Board members are gonna start doing these positions? Think of something to think about. Thanks.
John, you're up.
John Lynn, 31-year resident here and 29 years involved in the town. I'm gonna try one more time, a little bit differently. This is not about First Amendment. This is not about, um, podunk versus the state of confusion on the federal courts and whether or not we should all be allowed to speak. This is about behavior. This is about whether or not we, um, how we approach things, not whether or not we're able to approach things. And I'd like to use the example of the literary tragic flaw. They, uh, in literature, from, from the Greeks through Shakespeare to modern times, the tragic flaw is, is a... In literature, from the Greeks through Shakespeare to modern times, the tragic flaw is a character trait that means that where somebody just can't see the problem that they have created or the problem that exists inside themselves to their own destruction, to their own peril. Where they create, where there is, there is just a, it's a psychological or an emotional or a physical or whatever trait inside them that everybody else can see, but they somehow cannot and/or refuse to, and therefore will not change. King Lear, Macbeth, all sorts of characters out of fiction, but also in reality. The example, and I'm gonna go to somebody who's not like what we're talking about here, but just as an example. Saddam Hussein was denying that he had weapons of mass destruction because he didn't have them. Well, why would he do that? The rest of the world was wondering, what's going on here? He must have them because he's saying, he's not, he won't allow us in, he won't allow us to talk to him. Logic said he must have them, but he didn't. Well, why wouldn't he admit it? Because his ego wouldn't allow it, because his tragic flaw, like so many who are so narcissistic and usually authoritarian, can't admit that kind of weakness. And so, the world crashed down on him. Crashed down, destroyed his country, killed hundreds of thousands of people, killed and maimed and refugee hundreds of thousands of people, and then ended up in his own death because he couldn't make this one admission. Well, we're here at a much lower level. Everybody has flaws. We're all flawed. We all have problems, we all have difficulties. But the tragic flaw is the one that you can't see. And if you could just look over your shoulder and see the troubles that you've left in your wake, and see that maybe what we need is a change of direction here from you, because as some have said and as I've said in the past, your, your brain and your abilities and your understanding of the circumstances are usually pretty on the mark, but how you approach them is tragically flawed, and it has cost us, our administration. It is costing us, it has cost us amounts of emotional stress, money, and just chaos in this system because you feel you can't see that maybe you need to change in order to find a better path. If we want to find a way forward, you've always said, everybody here, you know, we've got to change. If it doesn't, if the thing isn't working, make a change. Well, it's not working. You need to make a change to come along and find out that other people, while they may have flawed ways of going about things, aren't always wrong simply because of the way they go about them. I would like you to please watch where we're going now and join in a better way of approaching it. Not necessarily a better approach, because we do need to improve this school system, but a better way of going about that approach. Thank you.
I'm Biddy Irwin, Newport resident, longtime educator, and I'm really getting tired of coming to these meetings to listen to nothing that has to do with our school system. We've been here since 5:00, 45 minutes. Not one thing about how we're going to move forward, look for staff, address the 211 situation, as Mr. Spalding calls it. We could always, we could also include the other schools and use those numbers as well. Nothing. We just talk about behavior, bad behavior. And what kind of example is it for our students if they see us as a community constantly in disarray and argumentative or in lawsuits? Mr. Spalding's quite familiar with suing the district or suing the town or suing somebody if he feels offended by something he wasn't allowed to do or say, and that didn't result in anything changing, except a lot of money going out the door. So I don't know how we're going to get to the point where we can come to this meeting and talk about the things that will make the school change. I'd love to be talking about the metrics. I went through the Department of Education today and pulled out all the data on the metrics and figured out what the CSI was and what the targeted improvements were and what the tide numbers were and how we look at lexiles and quantiles and figured out, you know, if we had a committee that could be talking about that without embarrassing the five of you, I would wonder if you even know what the metrics are that are being used to identify this district, either by the state or by School Digger. I also went on School Digger's website today to look at how they do their metrics and their disclaimer, which said, assessment, a one-time assessment is not a valid way to rate a district, with the caveat of, but we're gonna do it anyway. So, you know, I'd like to be having that dialogue here. I don't need to be talking about bad behavior all the time. I, I lived 21 years on the Board of Selectmen with bad behavior. Every once in a while, we had some good behavior, and every once in a while, I didn't get the lump of coal that year. But we've got to stop this. You have to work as a board, and I know you want to. I don't think there's a desire of any of you not to be united, but because of bad behavior, some of you feel attacked, some of you feel belittled, some of you feel defensive, some of you get your hackles up, some of you put your stake in the ground, and it doesn't go anywhere. And the results are, as we have heard now five times tonight at least, we're losing good people. So to Superintendent Minahan, thank you for your courage and for your brown helmet, putting up with all that you had to put up with. And to you, Patrice, nobody did more yeoman's work than you. And to you, Jennifer, you, you and your team pulled it off. We passed a bond vote in this town for a new center, so congratulations. You know? And this is the quality that we're losing. This is the dedication that we're losing. I know what these people make for salaries. I know where they can go, not that far, and make a lot more money, but they care. They care about this community. These people here didn't come out tonight because they don't care. They do care. They wanna see us, as Mrs. Urban said, all in the same boat. Let's stop and pull back and try not to continuously feel affronted if you don't get your, your say, or divert the attention of what we should be doing here around bad behavior. I've had the opportunity to watch Bill and Ted's Excellent Adventure, i.e. Steve and Tim's show, and they, you know, they really are trying in their own way to be positive about Newport. There's lots of stuff on there that I go, ah, about, but that's understandable. But they're, you know, they put themselves out there, they're trying. And, you know, Mr. Morris stepped up and he ran for the board, as did Bill. You know, this is a thankless job, thankless, because somebody is always upset. But it should be about positive things that can change. So I beg you, Bert, as a longtime colleague, to please, please stop your bad behavior and try to get along and try to accept things as they are. Nobody wants to silence you, truly, but let's try to move this district forward. Next time I come, I want to be talking about the building committee, I want to be talking about maybe a community team that's working on how do we look at the metrics and improve our test scores, which quite frankly are not the be-all, end-all, but how do we work with our population? Forty-six percent of which are on free and reduced lunch, 26% are special needs. You know, we've got a lot to work on, and we can't waste this kind of time. And I've wasted, are we on the three-minute rule?
Yeah.
Okay. And I've wasted...
Five seconds and then you get lose this time.
Okay. And I, and I could call up Bert and keep right on talking, but I won't. I've wasted three minutes of our time too. So I, I implore you all, and I implore you especially, Bert, because I know you can do it. Thank you.
That will close public comments for the evening. So with our agenda adjustment, that would be administration comments.
Is the administration going to say anything?
Saying in a presentation.
I can wait.
Yeah.
So we'll start with Tom?
Tom, you want to, this is like at the end, only it's at the beginning.
It's the end and the beginning.
Did your head into that?
Yeah, I know.
Don't go there.
The end of the beginning.
End of year activities are wrapping up. We've had a fantastic year. I really want to make sure that, I pay tribute to all of the teachers, the staff, the parents, the community, you've been very supportive to the middle school this year, so thank you very much. We have two activities left. Tomorrow is grade six, they're actually taking their field trip to Lake Sunapee, and tomorrow night, grade eight actually graduates and turn into ninth graders. So those are our last two activities that we're having at the middle school.
It's been a wild ride at the end of the school year, and I just would say that we had our class night on Monday night, which focuses primarily on our seniors. We do have some juniors who receive recognition on that night, but I, I'll share with this audience, like I did yesterday at graduation, we had over $77,000 awarded to this year's senior class, which is really impressive, and primarily local funded. So I, it blows me away, Newport absolutely blows me away, time and time again.
If you add up the renewals for that, and I actually had to exclude one just truly large national scholarship, just so we're clear, I did not count the Gates Scholarship, that's, that's very large. It's four years tuition paid to a school of that student's choice, but that Gates Scholarship excluded, if you add up the renewals of those scholarships that these students have applied for over those four years, we're at well over $148,000. So it's truly impressive, yeah. And to make it even a little more insane, they didn't actually apply for all of the money that was available to them. So we'll keep working every year, I know, Biddy. I see this. I can't tell you. So we'll keep working to make sure that kids apply to all of the funds that are available because there's even more money out there for kids who are working hard. For graduation, I, I would just say that yes, it was, it was amazing, it was true to this class, is what I will say. I survived. No, I was, they've been, they've been a delight. They're truly unique. Each group has its own nuances and the things that make them special, and it's amazing to me how they grow from, you know, I knew this group from eighth grade right up through, and man, did they give me a run in eighth grade. I don't know how, how middle school does, you know, let alone Richards, but it meant a lot to this, this crew to get back into Richards School and to see their classrooms and see some of their, their teachers that they remember very fondly, and I think a few even made the speeches at graduation. So they remember, you know, they have long memories about the teachers who impacted their, their journey. To pull off an event like graduation, I couldn't do it without everyone who helped, and the list is lengthy, everything from the presenters that you saw, but also behind the scenes. I think we maybe have a total of four maintenance people working in our district who pulled everything together for us to help just get the setup outside, to get things ready to receive hundreds of people, and I'm very, very indebted to them, to the amazing Deb Stevens, who I believe is here, excellent, who always corrals a crew of students and colleagues to come for, whether it's class night and turning a gym into a beautiful place to honor our students and their achievement, or graduation out on the field and how do you deal with wind or maybe rain? Unfortunately, it was beautiful, and, and thank you for that. To, I, district staff who came, I had Rob, who came again to line the field with Ms. Catruepe, who I couldn't do it without them and run the building at the same time. We even had former employees who came and helped to take tickets or hand out programs. So I'm not exaggerating when I say it couldn't happen without everyone. The teachers who volunteered to be there, to participate, but also to set up, to clean up. Okay, we, every, it took us cleaning it up. We don't have some crew we hire that comes in. We are the crew. So it was amazing. It's an amazing event because I think it truly exemplifies what Newport is and should be and can be. For the end of the year, we do have a kickball tournament planned because we just have to end with a bang, so looking forward to that. We're gonna be having a cookout as well. It's just some good community because community matters. And the, I, I did feel a need to add one job description to, to Patrice.
Oh, can we do that?
Well, no, it's done. It's so, she's also been our mentor coordinator and the trainer of new staff. And so one of the things that I'm looking ahead to is the beginning of next year, which is surprising because I'm barely, I'm a little tired right now at this point in this year, but thinking ahead to how we're going to receive it and really bring up the, all these new staff, our district staff. And that is, it's pretty sobering to think that this is my fifth year as a building administrator, and I will now be the senior building administrator in this district. Beyond that, because it's not all about Patrice, though I will miss you. I, I would like to add that in the middle of a, of a very hectic, normal year for a high school principal, the last month of school gets quite busy. I am non-stop with senior events, end-of-year events, awards, recognition, tournaments. I try to be at all those things, concerts, it's, it's crazy. I don't always make everything, but I try very hard. In the middle of all that, I look back at my calendar just while we were talking, and I've conducted 22 interviews this spring. I have, of the 22 that I've conducted for just my high school open positions, I forwarded seven of those people, thought they'd be excellent fits for us, and I believe I've had three accept.
Oh, I was gonna give you two, so good.
Well, I was counting one shared.
Okay, fair enough.
I was trying to be very, so one shared, middle and high position. And when you, when you put that time in, I felt a lot better about why I'm so tired. And that's all I have for you.
A few things. So I've been working on closing out the budget for the year. It's the end of the year, working towards making sure that we have the promised $500,000 fund balance to go towards reducing the tax rate in the fall. So that is on target, and we'll, we'll be right around that, because that's, we're working to make that happen. The other thing I want to just mention is that I think you've lost a workhorse in the community, in the school district. She's gonna be missed in the school district because she did a lot of things, and she is the heart of the admin team. And I think, I think things have to change, big time. I will, you know, continue to stay around as I've promised, but it's getting hard. And in 24 years of working in school districts, you know, I've never seen going into a summer to have this many open positions, and here repeatedly, time and time again, Newport is too volatile for me to come work here. That's a problem. And the volatility is because of the bullying that happens in this district. So I think it's important that things change and change quickly because you're gonna start the school year with some critical positions vacant. That's all I have to say.
That's it, huh?
Wasn't expecting that from you.
I don't wanna make light of anything, but sometimes I would skip over you because I think you make me cry more than anybody. But...
When I first started working, I thought the same thing.
Okay. Patrice.
I'm fortunate...
Patrice, I'm fortunate to sit with Ed on one side and Brendan on the other because where one is very thoughtful and emotional, one is very thoughtful and humorous. So it balances out. Thank you, everyone who showed up tonight. As I told my staff and anyone who's talked to me, you guys know I love this community, and this was not an easy decision for me. A lot of you spoke about how I choose to lead with positivity, and I drive change with teamwork and collaboration. I asked the board, and I asked them to be on my team. And members of this board, they chose differently. And that's not right or wrong, that's their choice. However, when you use your power and your position to belittle and harass administrators and indirectly the staff and the students and the families of this community, you are not working for what's best for kids. You are the opposite of what is best for kids. And that no longer aligns with my values of who I am as a person and what I can do as a leader. And because of that is why you have my resignation. I have done all I can for this community, and I feel terrible that I am leaving them because I believe in our plan, and I believe in the work we're doing, and I believe in the staff in this room. I believe in our students and our families. But when I am spending my days arguing with the board, and some members of the board, not the whole board, I can't do what I do best. So I wish the best to you guys. I know you're going to pull through, you always do. You guys do these things together, you're amazing. You do it for the kids. And I want the students and the families in this community to know you deserve better. And I hope that this is a moment that you can rally together and get what you deserve because these kids deserve better. Do you want to know why they deserve better?
Sure. It's not my meeting, but are you okay with that?
They deserve better because they did an awesome day on Memorial Day.
Okay.
All right? So we're going to jump into the amazing things they do. For Memorial Day celebration, Ms. Stout worked with all of our students, and they learned to sign all of the songs that they sang in the concert. And we were down on the Common, and the preschool came over, and it was this beautiful moment, and some of the police department came over, and they did this wonderful presentation. Ms. Stout had some fifth graders who led it and sang and spoke, and it was beautiful. Mr. Cherry goes out of his way, and he planned and executed these field day celebrations. The teachers were right in there with them. The kids had a blast. I've never been hit with so many water balloons in my life and so many, like, wet hugs. I know we've talked a lot about how the elementary school kids like to hug. They like to hug even more when they are soaking and dripping wet. And they are smelly when they're that wet. I don't care what age you are, you're smelly, okay? We also had a Great Spirit Week planned out this week. That was from one of our focus groups. There was a school-wide celebration focus group, and it was teacher-led. So we welcomed everyone on Monday for Hawaiian Day with floralese jumping off the bus and cars, you name it. You came on our school property, you ended up with a floralese, and we were welcoming you with aloha. And Mr. Clark was right out there with me, we had arms of floralese. It was fantastic. Tomorrow is Wacky Friday. We have a school-wide celebration and cookout. It's going to be great. We haven't done one of those in a long time. So, I mean, there are great things going on at Richards, and it's because of the kids and the teachers, and I am just so pleased. We finished our state testing. We have over the 95% in all areas. So that is super exciting. Participation, yeah. So, but, I mean, we're rocking, and it's awesome. And it is not despite obstacles and challenges and interruptions, but this community works together, and that's great. The last thing I just want to say, I will talk more about it at our faculty meeting, but I want to publicly say, because it's our last board meeting of the month, that I want to thank Belinda Stout and Karen Hansen for their years of service with this district. They have had a long tenure at Richards School and Newport School District, and they've made a lasting impact on this community. And it is going to be a significant change when they retire at the end of this year, and they will be missed. So that's all I got.
That's it? Okay. Couple of things. First, specific to the graduation, I do want to, I know so many people worked on it, but I really want to single out Tucker Hall and Selena, I don't know her last name. But they came over, they're both from the elementary school, and they came over and they figured out how to do what Ms. Martin wanted them to do. It required them to go and get, like, another canopy and do all of these things.
I'm very picky.
Well, no, it was good.
And Patrice is picky.
It was a good choice.
It was helpful to have that backup.
But I really wanted to single them out because I know, like, Tucker, my understanding is, I think he's worked for us for a week, and it was like, hey, welcome to this, so...
He got it. He knew it needed to be blacked out.
He did. He did a great job. I also wanted to let the board know and let Ed know that the bleachers have received rave reviews. And so kudos to the bleachers, and I guess to the people that installed them and bought them, et cetera.
Who built them?
They took a really long time and charged us a lot of money. This is really for wherever Patrice is going next, which we know, but I'm leaving they who shall not be named, coffee, highly motivating for Patrice, so...
She runs on coffee.
She runs on coffee. Next week, on Tuesday, I'm going to the Accountability Task Force. That was the time when I was telling Mr. Beard about the Accountability Task Force. So I am going to that next Tuesday. We had applied for a waiver with the federal government, we, the state of New Hampshire, and we're going to review which parts of it we get and which parts we don't. And then I just, oh, two other things. One is, Patrice and I have been working with a family, not really a family, people who live out of state.
Oh, yeah.
And they're really interested in helping us to bring an outdoor classroom to Richards. Our architect, LaValle Brezlinger Lance, donated the renderings, 3D renderings, and so we've shared those with those members who want to help us with it. We're going to get quotes from some area landscapers and business people. But it will really be, I mean, neither of us, I don't think, we might come for the ribbon cutting, but we won't be there to see it, but it will be so good for kids, you know? It was a focus group. It was their idea. I don't know which one of you were in that focus group.
Emily Stafford was on it.
Very good. No, I wouldn't think it was you, Melissa. I don't think you want an eighth-grade outdoor playroom, playground.
There's a mud kitchen.
The other thing, though, that I want to say, and I know that there's been a lot of talk tonight, but I was over at Richards, I don't know, yesterday, I think it was, and there was a student who was taunting Ms. Glancy. But aside from that, so the student said two things that really I thought were wonderful and sad. So the wonderful thing the student said was, "Glancy fancy, you know everyone, all the students love you. And do you know that?" And she said, "Yes, I do." And the other thing the student said is, "My mother keeps hearing that we're 211 of 211. We're moving out of the town." So, very sad, but that's it.
Right. Thank you. All right. That will bring us to information and action, and the first action that got moved up was board chair removal. Mr. Spalding?
I said enough about it.
Would you like to make the motion?
No need to, it's going to fail. But the point of bringing the discussion forward is to change the behavior, not mine.
Is there a motion for the board chair's removal? Okay. Hearing none, that will bring that item to a close. All right. Let's move on to what we should be here for. Calendar changes.
Yeah, so just two quick changes. I know I had brought the calendar to you, I think it was in late January, but since that time, there's been two slight changes. One, in my, whoops, I just wrote on my pen, in my zeal, I added one additional professional development day, which is outside of the teacher's contract, and also would probably be a little bit of overkill, it would make number 11. And the reason I did that is because there's, like, 8,000 elections this year, and I kept trying to close a school when we had elections so we could use a high school. So the 9th of May, we would still hold the election, but it would really be a no-school day for students and staff. Originally, it was a no-school day for just students. The other request I have is on April the 7th, to do a student early release for the district. And the reason for that request is that I came, I think I came before the board earlier this year, because there was a request, as there always is, to really have parking available for Good Friday for the church. And for equity reasons and those types of things, I would just ask that we make it a half-day for the students and that we then have, you know, a half-day, that's what it's called, sure. So those are the two minor changes. But because of the board vote, I need your vote.
Is there a motion to approve those? Two calendar changes. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Thank you very much. Before we move on, I completely blew by the minutes. So let me just backtrack, and we do need to approve the public minutes of May 26. So I will need a motion for those.
I would move the minutes of May 26.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor? Oh.
Aye.
Any discussion?
Page two. Superintendent is going to get back to us on the changes. And I've not heard a word. Is that still on the table?
Which change?
Page two, right at the top.
Yeah.
Mr. Spalding stated that since the changes have been made...
Oh, yeah, 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 that one. No, I picked one. I talked to Mr. Upton about that one. So it's changed, even though it was the wrong letter, it didn't make a difference. It was fine. The intent was there.
So corrections?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the May 26 minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? And I will abstain more. Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Plemmons. CTE comprehensive needs assessment presentation.
So we're going all the way through, right?
Nigel?
Yeah. So if the board will allow, Jennifer didn't take her admin time because she was going to do it at one fell swoop.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate what everyone said tonight on all accounts. I just really am glad the community's coming out to rally support for this district because it is wonderful. And as I've said from the minute I got here, it has been a wonderful time to be in Newport. This has been an incredible team to work with, the board, the community, I can't, just can't say enough. I'm going to talk a little bit about Perkins funding tonight and about the monitoring review that we have to do every year, and then every three years, there's kind of a big comprehensive piece to this. So this is like a annual update that happens in the spring to fill in the DOE on how we're doing, and the results of how we're doing in this monitoring report directly impact where our Perkins funding will be spent. So Mr. Perry, who I'm glad is here tonight, yes, go ahead.
For those that don't know, you need to tell everybody what Perkins funding is.
Absolutely, yes.
We have a technical language issue, not just you, all of us, so...
We're just trying to be better about it.
Perfect. Beautiful. Okay. So that's, so Perkins is federal funding that comes to career and technical education centers for the purpose of supporting that technical education because it typically tends to be more expensive than just regular education. You think about all of the equipment, et cetera. And so Newport receives $44,000 in Perkins funding that can be used for professional development, it can be used for equipment, it can be used to increase, like, academic performance, improve diversity, market, those types of things, so that your technical programs stay strong and industry-ready. So it is a gift of $44,000 from the federal government for CTE programs. And it is based on sort of the census in the area. So, for example, the number of people, the population in an area drives the amount of money that school districts get. So it's not based on the number of CTE programs, it's not based on quality or performance, for example, or outcomes necessarily, it's really based on the census. And so I wanted to share it with you tonight because it does inform people about what it is that we do. So career and technical education teachers often come to us from industry, and we believe that that is a gift in many ways, and they bring with them many industry partners and a form of leadership that comes with having an expert in the field. So if you notice under CTE, we are technical education first and foremost, we're here to educate, but we're also trying to basically get our students into high-skill, high-wage jobs in the community, either after post-secondary college opportunities or right away as they graduate from high school. And that is really the goal of career and technical education. So along the way, we want our students to receive industry-recognized credentials, we want to partner them within the industry that wants to hire them through internships, work-based learning, through our program advisory committees, and we also promote youth leadership, as you hear. Ms. Stevens' FFA is a great example of that student leadership. And you'll notice on the bottom left, some of the licensure programs where students earn licenses and certifications that really boost their ability to earn money. And also, I would say, their pride, their self-esteem, and their ability to kind of access whatever they want in the future. So it does, this is what we're trying to do, and it is sort of, it's a slightly different take on education than other areas of education. So I'd just like to let people know, especially where we have a new board. So this report reflects things that you might not expect it to reflect. So one of the things that Perkins asks us to do, and I believe that they should ask us to do, is make sure that we have some gender equality, where we are encouraging our male students to try out our cosmetology programs, where we would like women in engineering and automotive and welding programs. And they ask us what those numbers are, and we'll talk about those in a minute. Socioeconomics is also a big deal. We can't just, especially through our application process, ignore the idea that there may be differing abilities to get into our programs, and we need to pay attention to that. So socioeconomics and making sure that everyone has an opportunity, right? That there's equity in these processes is really important. And then learning styles, so special needs students or students with different styles that we have the supports that we need in the district to support those students, and then race, diversity, is what it is. We want diversity of race to basically reflect in CTE, the population that we serve. On to the next slide. So here are a few of the results found in this report. I've reported before that our graduation rate has been as high as 96%. What this is looking at is CTE completers. Are their rates in line, and how are we doing? So there's been a slight drop, but I think you have to take into consideration COVID in this, and I think with Mr. Perry reporting next year on these same indicators, I think you're going to see a raise in some of these numbers for a variety of reasons. So 86% graduation rate in 2021. I did not ask sort of what the high school graduation rate was, but that's still relatively strong, down from the 96% from before. So I'm hoping Mr. Perry can report next year that we have a stronger graduation rate in CT next year. 48% of students in 2021 were able to earn an industry-recognized credential. So thanks to the work that we've done this year, thanks to Heather Wells, to Eric, and the rollout of an OSHA-10 program, CPR certifications, first aid certifications, we were able to, as a team, roll that out to the entire school district, so, I mean, to our CTE component of the district. So Mr. Perry, next year, should be able to report the 21, 22 numbers to you, and I hope that those are going to reach about 70... hope that those are going to reach about 75% of the population will have industry-recognized credentials. Um, work-based learning is also on the upswing with the hire of Hannah O'Connell, and so Hannah and I have been able to tag-team. This year, we have 20%, 21% of our CT students have participated in either in-house, on-campus work-based learning, or off-campus work-based learning. So if you're opening the salon to the public, that's work-based learning. If you open your auto shop for an oil change for the community, that's work-based learning, as well as getting students, as you know, into Ruger and other places like that.
Can I just say something?
Of course.
That's thanks to the board, if you remember. You allowed us to hire the...
Oh, yes, thank you.
...college and career counselor position.
Yes, exactly, thank you. Um, it looks at, like those non-traditional we talked about. So I'm showing some ways or places where we need to grow. Um, so we have, at the moment, we don't have any males in cosmetology in our 102 program, but that will change for next year. We do have one person. Um, so this is an area of growth. We can market differently. I've talked to Ms. Hodge, maybe to add a barbering component, pieces like that, or ways that we could potentially move that target. And again, Perkins funding is geared toward trying to make those shifts. Um, one in automotive, we have had much higher rates in the past. We hope to move the other, move in another direction to increase that number of female enrollees in automotive, and it is looking stronger for next year. And then our rate is about 3% minority, and about 97% Caucasian white. Um, I think that's relatively reflective, but we could potentially do a little bit better in that area as well. Um, when we look at test scores, it's been a highlight of the district to be looking at test scores. Um, ELA, which is your English Language Arts, 32% proficient, math, 16% proficient, and science, 41% proficient, but only 17 students took the science, uh, test from CTE. Not sure why. And I wanted to give a shout-out to engineering, because those students carried the team. So when you looked at the highest scores for testing, the engineering students were our strongest, and really helped to raise the percentage of success. Um, but as with every other school that we've been talking about in the district, we have work to do. And so Richards is not alone, right? We have things that we need to do together, and CTE has work to do. Um, the report talks about size, scope, and quality of our programs. They want to know how we're doing, how successful are our programs. Um, I use the example of welding, it is too small. The renovation will allow it to expand and right-size that program. We have this huge space for business, which, um, and a tiny, tiny school store, which will be more of an incubator space, that needs to be resized. So the renovation, thanks to the community, will help with the size. It'll also help with the scope, because we'll be able to expand career pathways. And it, I have to say, the quality, when I wrote about this, the quality of our programs is exceptional, and that's because of the phenomenal teachers that you have. And if you can keep them, please do. Pay them well, treat them well, and do everything you can to protect them, because that is why we are seeing such success rates, um, in CT. It's not an accident, it's intentional, based on quality teachers that we hire. All right. Uh, this report also looks at regional demand, because we want to make sure students can have jobs. So in the renovation, we looked at these programs again, but they ask us to do this every year. So here you see our programs and the number of regional, uh, job opportunities in each of these areas. So, um, when you're seeing transportation, that'll be our automotive fields, um, everything else is pretty straightforward. Manufacturing includes welding, human services includes cosmetology. And so our programs are pretty well in line. Mr. Perry may look at growth opportunities, those may be aviation with your Newport, uh, airfield nearby, it may be teachers, um, growing teachers, which I think you could use, um, and maybe digital media arts, but there are many others that you guys could consider. Um, this also is very poignant for tonight, the recruitment, retention, and training, and Perkins, um, can be used for these types of purposes. So working to reduce turnover is one of the things that we need to do in order to show improvement and growth, because even within CTE, we have had turnover. So we have teachers that have been here one year, two of them one year, another teacher, two years, Eric and I, three years, you know, so we're not deep in the pool. We, you know, Ms. Stevens is holding us strong. She left at 20 years, right, but, um, when she retires, you'll have a very, very young crew. Um, so the strong team culture, the supportive culture, has held us together. The continued training through NHLI, which is another thanks to the whole district, um, really raises the bar for, uh, teacher, uh, sort of ability to help students meet competencies, which is key for CTE. And then those assessments, and student self-paced assessments, and competency work is all very important, and the district has supported that. So 100% of our programs have current viable articulation agreements, which are college articulation agreements, and that's a requirement of this, um, report. Full enrollment or waitlist for '22, '23, which they also, of course, love to see, and so do we, and authentic program advisory committees that meet at least three times a year. Um, and all of these things have been, getting these things together to get to this point, has been the great work of our team. And so I want to thank them, because when I started here, we did not have all these ducks in a row. So I'm proud of everyone for making that happen.
Right.
All right. So the last piece of this is that we, again, the growth piece. So academic performance, there are things we can do. We can embed more language arts and math into our programs more systematically, to make sure that students get more practice, and that will help with the test scores, as well as, we know, trying to take the test a little bit more seriously. But there's more we can do. Um, we're embedding employability skills. Mr. Perry, when he comes onboard, will tell you his plans, they're great, and it will also help students to better prepare for their jobs when they leave us. And then exposure to diverse people and opportunities. So these come through work-based learning, through, um, some of the things I'm going to mention, like a, a pipe welder came in the other day with mirror welding to show the kids, and so as much exposure and opportunity we can provide for students, the better. And again, Perkins funding, um, will help support those, those pieces, and so will you, through the school budget and the community, and helping to support education. All right. So, this, which is the...
Part two.
Yeah, this is part two. So I just wanted to thank you first for listening to that, and for taking a look at the report. Um, it, the, the funding we get is valuable, um, what these teachers do is extremely, not only valuable, but it's hard work, and it's a little different than, than maybe the typical, uh, teacher ask, um, and their success is showing big time. Do you have any questions for me, either about Perkins funding, about how the tech center is doing or performing, or any other questions I could answer? No. Okay, well, thank you. So this turns to that, like, you know, what, the fun that's going on in CTE, right? So renovation, so that you have an update, we are fine-tuning the design with teachers, um, as you know. Tomorrow is a big day, because the architects are coming full force, three architects, um, to basically meet with every single student in the CTE, um, starting at 7:30 in the morning, running all the way until about 11:00 in the morning, and then meeting with community. Please come, please. Um, and for those of you who are like, full-time job, can't get away for lunch, we will reschedule. So these are design charrettes, where you have a chance to look at what kind of interior and exterior design might you want. The students get to comment on, you know, how, how they store equipment, how they use their spaces, what kind of, do they like natural light, do they like wood tones, all those things. So that'll be a really fun charrette. Um, everyone is welcome to that, and like I said, if you can't make it tomorrow, we can reschedule. Um, we are in the process of hiring a construction manager with interviews happening, um, on Monday, that's very exciting, and the building committee is being put together. I will mention, thank you, Biddy, she put her name in the ring, we were looking for a woman to join with some expertise. The building committee, it's not really, um, on my plate, but I have passed it on, because it will be, um, it would be nice to have some female representation. Um, we're gathering the student input, and we hope that, from that input and the teacher input, we will be able to design a space that, uh, has a student voice behind it. So I'm thrilled that the architects put the kids at the forefront, um, because it's really important. So there's a great example. Um, this is the type of workshop it is, where they show you designs, and you get to look and comment, whether it's on color, whether it's on flooring, whether it's on lighting, whether it's on windows, and, um, you know, do you like red, do you like the funky chairs, what kind of feel and vibe do you want from your tech center? And so you can imagine what a fun exercise that is, and I hope everyone jumps in. All right, I'd like to remind people of the RAC. Yes, go ahead.
Just before we move on, so this meeting, where is it located?
So it will be here. So for the community portion, we did it lunch, hoping that people could run in for lunch. Um, it'll take about 45 minutes, starting at, if you can come in at 11:30, 11:45 will start, it'll run until 12:30.
Here, as in the Lou Thompson?
Oh, sorry, specifically. Probably Lou Thompson, maybe Health Science, I'll have to see where that works out. But yes, um, just sign into the main office, and we will escort you to the architect charrette. So, it, it really should be fun. RAC meetings continue, the next one is coming up on Tuesday, and so 6:00 PM online, you can get that information on our website. And here it goes. All right, Bremco spent the day with us, mirror pipe welding, that was really, really exciting, and the kids couldn't believe it, they got to try it. This is an industry skill that is not that easy, mirror welding. So I just want to give a big shout-out to Ms. Wells and, and Bremco for coming. Um, Ms. Wells will also be in a video, uh, and, and some of her students, to promote welding as, as an industry, to get more people into welding, and to get those students excited about the industry. The guy who brought the extra pipe, uh, to share with us, uh, is driving a $90,000 truck, and he does that with ease. So we're really excited to have the kids, like, experience that type of financial security. Uh, 100% of the EMTs passed their practical exam. Thank you.
Woo-hoo!
Yes. How many, do you want to comment?
Uh, we have seven complete the program successfully, and seven passed the state practical exam. So they're onto their national boards, um, in the next couple of weeks.
Very exciting, very exciting, yes. Um, automotive students are going to be taking ASE tests on Monday and Tuesday, they're a little nervous, but this is a great credential for them to have, so shout-out to Mr. Rosenson. All right, middle school summer camp. Are we ready?
All right.
High five?
Almost there.
All right, almost there. We have 40 applicants, thank you. There are about 10 spaces available still, please apply, it's free. Uh, and that will roll out the last week in June, and we are very excited about that. Ausgood Construction is joining our, uh, our internship team, and came in and met with us today, and they are excited to mentor some young high school students, uh, which we appreciate. Uh, engineering students tackled a difficult robotic task, to sort blocks, et cetera, with sensors, it took them about three weeks, it was difficult, and, um, a lot of problem solving, they didn't give up, and they were psyched, and we're hoping to see a robotics team, uh, really ignite next year. So I wanted to share that. Natural Resources students are, uh, in the, in the woods still, cutting and climbing trees, and pruning in the community, et cetera, but they are also, um, being hired in the community. So, one, I'm proud of the students for getting these great jobs, and two, thank you, community, for hiring them, but JCB Landscape, Catherine Gardens, so many local places are hiring our agriculture students, um, and the students are really loving it. They're, they're, they're enjoying what they're doing, and it ties so beautifully to their CTE programs. And that's it. Yeah, so anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So that brings us, speaking of the CTE building committee, we need to formalize that committee.
Okay.
So, um, as the CTE project moves forward, we need to, uh, have a committee, um, that will make kind of the on, on-the-spot kind of decisions to help the, the, the project move forward. So, um, um, some of the types of things that we need to make decisions on, uh, we're going to be hiring a construction manager, um, starting on, on, on Monday, hopefully we'll be able to get that done on Monday, uh, interviewing three, um, three contractors to, uh, choose between, um, uh, out of, um, so, uh, that's just one. Uh, as the progress goes forward, awarding, um, subs of value engineering, and, um, uh, the project to make sure it stays in budget, managing the budget of the, of the project, um, uh, in utilizing the contingency funds that are built into the budget to help balance and keep things, uh, moving forward. Um, so we propose the committee to be based, um, based, we're, the committee we're proposing is based on a discussion that, um, Dr. Minahan and I had with the board chair and vice chair. Um, we, uh, recommend Mr. Perry in his role as the CTE director. Um, we recommend Rodney Page as his role is a maintenance director, and as the clerk of the works of the project. Um, we recommend myself as the owner's representative, representative to the committee. Um, we've, um, we recommend Mr. Morris, um, as a board member rep. Um, the main reason, um, we, we recommended Mr. Morris is he's very available during the day, which is when these, this committee will most likely need to be making those decisions. Um, and then, um, the fifth member of that committee, um, and wanting to keep it at an odd number, um, is, um, for the, for the remainder of this month, um, Jennifer, um, as her role in the CTE director, um, so that we can make that decision about the, uh, construction manager on Monday. Um, as she moves on to bigger and better things, uh, we'd recommend that you, um, that to replace her in July would be the new BA. So, that would be our recommendation, and we hope you support it.
All right. So, we need a motion to approve those individuals to, uh, form the CTE building committee. Okay, is there a second? I'll second, is there a discussion?
I'm curious why we need to approve individuals. We should just approve the committee, and then whatever individuals are on it. I mean, his list is fine, and if the people agree, that's one thing. If somebody flips later, that's another thing. The way you're setting it up, we would have to approve them each time if somebody decided they wanted to. Uh, I think we approved the committee, they've got their members. It is what it is. If they flip later and choose somebody else, I mean, we don't want to be approving every single person all the time.
And Ed, you didn't need us to necessarily approve individuals, right?
More information.
Well, for the, the thing is, there's some, you know, it's $15 million project. So they, these people are making the decisions that of how we're going to spend that money. Um, you know, so I think it's, it's, it's a higher-level committee than, than a, a normal committee.
So I'm only approved each and every time, like if somebody switched?
I, I really think that it's that level of a committee.
Are you giving them some level of, um, what's the word I want, um, culpability? Uh, you know, like we're...
Liability?
Yeah, liability?
Arts, so that they wouldn't be held responsible.
As, as, uh, re, as a person that's working on behalf of the school district, it would be covered, as long as they're work, they're making decisions in their role as a committee member, they would, they would be covered from a liability standpoint.
Wouldn't it be everyone but Steve?
No.
Of course.
Yeah, much like, much like the school board.
Right.
As, as long as you're in, in your role as a school board member, you're, the school district, uh, and their insurance company would, would, would take care of you as, uh, any liability.
Okay, so for appointing them as a particular position, and they'd come forward futuristically, if somebody switched, and, and were moving ahead that way, and, and then they're making decisions on their own. Okay, I guess. I'm a little hazy still, but...
I think, Bert, Bert asks, to be recognized.
Of course, of course.
I'm all for us not stepping in on the changes that happen after these appointments, because the decisions have to be made relatively quickly, and the decisions should be made on the spot, in order to keep the project going. Uh, to come back here, uh, with an opportunity of twice a month, in order to get somebody else to be wrong. So, uh, the people that are originally approved, if they transition in or out, and, uh, Ed or, uh, Mr. Morris decides that, uh, a replacement can come in, uh, without the borough board's purview, I think that is absolutely appropriate in this situation.
Bill?
Um, my only question, Ed, um, and maybe I just missed it, because sometimes I do that. Uh, is there a community representative? Like, I know, I know we had, uh, SAU representative, school board representative, um, tech center representative, just...
So, um, let me think here. So, I think, of course, Steve is... So, I think, of course, Steve is his board member, but he represents the community. I don't want to take away from the fact that we have the renovation advisory committee that meets every month. We talk about a lot of the decisions that would be made. When there's time, we will talk about that and get feedback from them. There are many representatives, and I would hope that Ginny would join us on that committee. So that, yes, there is constant feedback, but this particular committee is just... It's on-the-spot decision-making throughout the process.
All right, all those in favor of approving the CTE Building Committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstained? Okay. Thank you very much, Ed.
Thank you.
Okay. We have had a lot of discussion about the changes that are upcoming for Newport, and this next one I'm particularly looking forward to. I would like to introduce our new interim superintendent, Donna McGoon. She's coming to us from Milford. Donna, please come on up.
Thank you, thank you. First, I'd like to thank everybody for giving me this wonderful opportunity to become part of Newport's community. I'm really looking forward to it. You know, and I sit here and I listen to all the concerns and everything, and I do take them in, and I will respond, and I will react. And I look forward to having some feedback from the community, from the board, from parents, so that way I know what's going to drive us to move forward. I did spend today in the schools, and I was very excited to see all the happy and dedicated staff that there is in this district, in each building. And it was great, you know, from the preschool program to the SAU, to the high school, to the middle school, to Richards. And I really liked, you know, the questions that were asked, because it really shows that the people in this community, that the staff in this community really care, and it's very nice. And so I would like to thank you very much for this opportunity. Thanks.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you for spending the day with us and this evening with us. We really appreciate it, and we're really looking forward to what's next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Yes, you're next, yes.
So the other person I wanted to introduce is Diane Mulholland. The board approved her probably a month or two ago at this stage of the game. She's coming in as the Ed replacement, the doppelganger of Ed. And she comes from kind of a strong finance background, the city of Derry. I think there's a few other places involved.
Derry, Allentown, London, Derry.
Yeah, that area. But she's moved up here to Lebanon. And so, her movement is our gain as a district, and so we're really happy to have her here and happy to have her following in Ed's small footsteps.
I do have small footsteps.
He does. That's all I'm talking about, the size of the ship, okay? And so, thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay.
I know.
New hires. So, who wants to do... Do you want to start with Megan Oxland?
So, I am excited to bring Megan Oxland forward. So, Megan reached out to us after she had applied, because she had met some of the teachers and community members, and she has worked in the area. And sent this really nice email that just said she was very excited and wanted to just come in and take a look and see what it was like. And the team interviewed her. She did great. We had her in to do a mini lesson, and we put her in one of our third-grade classrooms. And it is not the easiest third-grade classroom, and there are definitely some behavior challenges, and she did not shy away from it. She was calm, reassuring. She went over and, you know, addressed the students, got them to do the work in a way that was really nice to see. So, you know, we are very lucky to be bringing her forward. She will be part of our lower BLT and replacing Alex Smallwood, who will be leaving. She will be coming in with nine years of experience at a BA Step 10 for $47,627.
And this is one I sent to previous.
So I'll go ahead and make that motion, since I have the numbers here. So I will move that we approve Megan Oxland at a BA Step 10, $47,627. Sarah, second?
Seconds.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Welcome. I'm very excited to have Ms. Oxland here. Okay. Who's next?
Christian Slater, and that is...
That's me.
Not the actor?
No.
You know, I didn't even know that's an actor.
I hope the kids find it intriguing, too, and will love that.
Christian Slater is a new educator pleased to bring forward tonight. So we have the opportunity to have a full-time, full-time dedicated art teacher for middle school and also for the high school. So he would be coming in for our high school art position. It's going to open up some more opportunities for our students. He's got a really exciting background in many different art medias, and in particular, we're hoping to play around with more of our digital arts. So excited about that. His... Just his feedback when we did reference calls is that he connects well with students, that he's, you know, high-energy, high-passion, which really gets kids on board. And he builds that meaningful rapport with students, so we're pretty excited about that. He's a Plymouth State grad, so we like our local guys. He would be coming in at Step 1 at $36,467.
I will make the motion for Christian Slater, BA Step 1, $36,467. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in... Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Welcome. Were those the only two?
Those are the two hires, correct. Hopefully, we'll have more coming.
All right, that brings us to... Can I skip the next one? Okay, brings us to resignations. So we have the resignation of Patrice Clancy, Melissa Mitchler, and Carrie Sitak. And because nobody wants to do it, I'll do it first, but I hope that we approve those resignations.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed and abstained?
I mean, you can leave, but this is my symbolic way of saying that, no, I don't approve of it.
All right, policy, something that will not make you cry. All right, so my understanding from the last meeting is policy BEDH was tabled, because we... There was a request to remove under Section 7, the words obscene speech. So the sentence, the last sentence, the read, comments threatening bodily harm or other unprotected speech will not be tolerated. This is something different than... I wasn't here, so I'm happy to hear any further discussion. Or if there's a motion to approve that second read.
Motion to approve second reads of policy BEDH.
Sarah, second? Okay. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Thank you. Mr. Spalding seconded.
Thank you. And the vote was?
Unanimous. Okay, that brings us to communications. So it's just us for communication, since administration and the superintendent have already went, although is there anything additional that's come up? Board communication.
I would like to formally announce my resignation. This is ridiculous. Every one of these people over here, I helped hire, except Patrice, who was here longer. I've thrown my head into the wall over and over and over to hire these people. We hired them low. We begged them to stay. We offered what we can. They come here because they love it. That is why they come here. They come here and they are abused. We are abused, everybody. The narcissism is unbelievable, and at this moment, there's probably a small smirk over there, because the micro-expressions can't stop it. He gets off on this. It's not healthy. And I'm done. I hope you enjoy it. Control the smirk, Bert. You didn't win. You have an issue. I'm sorry, but this is ill.
I say no to you, too?
You can try.
I know, I know, I know.
I know.
I know, okay.
If somebody needs any advice, you don't worry, and I'll probably come help you guys. But the smirk and narcissism, it's funny. I have a life and a family, and I don't need that.
Any other board communication?
Yeah, if I could, just a couple of quick things. First of all, Melissa, I've already missed our talks. I was working at Toll when Melissa came to work for us, and we spent hours setting up her classroom, hauling in boxes of books and whatnot. And then, long after she came in, really so many teachers. That was one of the joys of my position as a custodian, is that I get to see the staff before they were fully occupied by the students. I've already missed our conversations. I'm certainly going to miss knowing that you're around. Patrice, I'm sure it goes without saying, I was really hoping that we would have at least a year worth of consistency in leadership as we... As the district tried to roll out the Richards Road to Success. And so to say I'm disappointed is an understatement. Is what it is. Disappointment is what it is. We move forward, you know? But going record is saying that I am very disappointed. To the community as a whole, there are many things that make an institution successful. And this applies to any institution, whether it's a public institution like a school, a private institution like a business, maybe even a nonprofit institution like a church. There are a lot of pieces that drive success. Two of, in my mind, the biggest pieces are consistency in leadership and proper funding. So as a community, anytime we have short-funded, or every time we turn over leadership, we are hindering our work towards success. It's something I want the community to be aware of, especially next year, as we start preparing a budget. And, you know, we're looking to, you know, fund the programs at a level that will allow them to be successful. Certainly, when it comes to administration, I've watched this for many years, and it's not just one person in the community. It's not just the school board that has a tendency to beat up on administration. I've seen it from, you know, within the community as well. So, I'm not singling one person out. Calling on the community as a whole to take those two things into consideration, those are two pieces to success of any institution, proper funding and consistency in leadership. And I hope that as a town, as we're moving forward and building up, we're keeping those things in mind.
Steve or Bert?
Yep.
Bert, go first.
Geez, I was going to tell them I appreciated their comments. But I will not change, and I do not intend to. 211 is absolutely unequivocally unacceptable for this school district to be there. We used to be in the '60s. So, in the last three years, we lost twenty positions. Somebody has to have the guts, courage, to stand up and say, "That is unacceptable, and we need to go the other way." Goodbye. So, when it changes and the effort becomes one, rather than kill the messenger, we want to actually get it done and figure out how to do it, then that's okay. To listen to a teacher stand here and say, "It's not doable. The teachers are overloaded," is, to me, defeating right from the get-go. Attitude generates success almost everywhere you go in the world. And those who are complacent drag it down. So we somehow have to recover from this Bert-created disaster, which I had nothing to do with the loss of twenty positions. So, think about that. Oh, wait a minute, you might say budgets. Coming forward with a $4 to $5 per thousand budget increase is staggering for a community, for those who pay property taxes. So, to say that those corrections were the reason? I don't buy it. The funding of the district is important, but also the strangulation of the taxpayer is important. So, there has to be a balance between the two. When the attitude really gets to the point of, "We've got a problem. We've got to fix it," and it comes to the board, which, by the way, 211 didn't come to the board until I brought it up. And so, that, in fact, to me, is denial. And that is okay. I've been in this position a number of times, where this should be done, and I get fried. And that's absolutely okay with me. I understand the First Amendment for them also. But I also understand it gives the ability to bring the problems that are underlying to the view of the public, who's paying the bills. And so, therefore, remaining at 211 and not taking our resources and all of this effort and putting it, channeling it into getting off the bottom, to me, then I'm the villain. They call me any name they want. I will not stop. It will turn around. The Exxon Valdez will not hit the rocks in this case. We are already there.
Steve?
I just want to say, Ms. Clancy, you said board members aren't on your team, so you implied more than one. And if I'm included in that, I want you to know I'm on everybody's team. I just had specific questions that I wanted answered. Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. With that being said, I wanted to thank Ms. Martin again, not only as a parent, but as a school member. A lot of work went into what went on last night.
Thank you, Steve. I'm sorry. I forgot to thank Ms. Martin for last night. It was on my mind, I swear to God.
It was amazing. Bill, your daughter saying twice this week. I mean, that's stressful. I talked about it on the Bill and Ted's Excellent Adventure Show. It's just, it's impressive, and I know we have tough work ahead of us, because we've all said it, it's not a personal attack on anyone. It's a community effort to get and move forward. And when you're out there and you see the amazing things that our kids do, other parents' kids do, it's a parent that the teachers care. And we know that the teachers care, and the amount of work that goes in, sometimes unpaid. Most of us would struggle to volunteer our time for our, you know, our own families and friends, much less, you know, the community, that parents may or may not even say thank you. So, I know we've had tough discussions in here. The teachers have made it clear that we are losing excellent... we are losing an excellent pair of you. I mean, that's not to disparage Ms. McGoon, we look forward to you as well, but it has been, I've received emails, phone calls, personal, you know, come up and talk to me out in the community, how much that you're both respected. I appreciate it, I have more questions that, as hopefully the plan stays and it transitions and we can have our, which I think you're going to talk about, the committee, to look into that and focus the community efforts, and so it's not us sitting here pointing every two weeks, it's us collaborating and working together and coming up with that solution. But thanks again for the awesome, what you, so as a parent, it was amazing to see my daughter walk across the stage and all the effort, Ms. Martin. And the picture was already mentioned, I was going to make a joke about it, but Nikki sent me the picture from the front page of the paper, so.
Did they get that picture?
Yes.
Oh, I haven't seen it. I'm sorry.
Valley do's.
No, we're not sure.
But anyway, thanks.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Did you know what that was?
No, I, I came up to her afterwards, I was like, oh, he did a little dipsy-doo, and she was like, no. And she turned bright red, and then, so that's the other part that makes it even sadly funny for me, is because she was so angry, not angry, but embarrassed, because she didn't know it was coming, and then for it to be on the front page of the paper is, I'm sorry. But, you know, that was the whole story of why I made the joke, is because I didn't know what he did. I thought it was like a twirl, a happy, yeah, pirouette, exactly.
May I add one thing? I'm sorry, just because, just because Steve brought it up, and it made me think of it, and I really should have. First of all, Shannon, I understand it was your idea to make that last-minute change to have Brianna sing at graduation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. As a parent, brought tears to my eyes to see my baby girl, you know, standing up and singing. But I do want to give a shout-out to Alexander Stewart. Mr. Stewart, is he still here, or no? Well, somebody will see him, I'm certain, actually, I'm pretty sure I'll see him soon. But I want to make sure that it's said publicly. Mr. Stewart, I assume he's done it for other students, but he has pulled Brianna so far out of her comfort zone. She had pretty much written off band two years ago, you know, and this year, not only is she doing, you know, flute solos at church, she's learning to play the piano, you know, he said, hey, you might as well learn this, and she did. She's helping to, she, or she helped to coach some of the younger performers, you know, she sang a cappella at graduation. I can't tell you how far out of her comfort zone that is. So a huge shout-out to Alexander Stewart. I'm not sure whose decision it was to bring him on board, but I'm very grateful that you did. Well, I wasn't here.
Under fantastic circumstances.
Yeah, no, but yeah, no, recognition needs to be as public as criticism.
May I add to?
Of course.
I have to speak to that. So Mr. Stewart, with our graduating seniors, was down to three students in the band, and without speaking with him, I made an assumption that I thought was very logical, which was we would not have live music at graduation. I think I stabbed a piece of his musical soul when he found out about that. So the band that performed, I was telling Jenna just before, yeah, the band that performed at graduation was a collection of former students, alumni, staff. It really, it really was a community effort, and so, and he pulled that together, because not only was it just the notes for pomp and circumstance, but that took some stamina. It was a long time, I don't know if you were there, you know, sitting in your seat, but imagine playing for that amount of time as they come in and as they processed off. So he did an exceptional job bringing that together, as did that whole crew. Very impressive. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Can I add something?
Of course.
Mr. Lund, would you like to come up?
Well, he, we just did an interview with him this morning, Bella did, and so it would be on NCTV and on the, on the Facebook, and he talked, he's really, he's really a polymath, the guy's, and so watch that interview, it's very, it's really good, it's about 15 minutes.
Great, thank you.
Facebook, YouTube, and whatever.
All right, I don't want to keep those that don't have to be here much longer, I do want to congratulate the class of 2022. It was truly an honor to be there yesterday. I did learn that I need some microphone training, but that's fine, I'll. But congratulations to them, congratulations to Ms. Martin and all of your help that you had to pull that off, it was incredible. We have a couple items of business for the committee. Now that Rhonda has submitted her resignation, we have an empty spot that we need to fill. So for this, her spot will be appointed by the board. And so what will happen is tomorrow, maybe tomorrow, Monday, we'll go Monday, we will have questions that will be available at the SAU for the public, anybody who's interested can respond to those questions, and we will look for those responses by the next board meeting. We will review those and then make a decision of who to appoint to Rhonda's seat, which they will fill until the election, and then it will be their choice in January, whether or not they choose to run. I would encourage, those who are interested is how I got on the board. I would be kidding you if I said this was an easy job, but it is rewarding, it really is. So I will work on that for Monday. We have an elementary ad hoc committee that needs to get going yesterday. I am willing to get this started as a board rep, but I need more help than that, teachers, community members. It's also how I got my feet wet in the board, is somebody said, hey, why don't you be on a preschool committee? And somehow I never left. Biddy was right when she talked earlier about knowing those metrics and understanding them, and she's probably also right in calling all five of us out about those. So I will work on that. If you hear from me, don't be surprised, I will be soliciting committee members for that. There is a schedule change to our board meetings, so I had initially scheduled two meetings for this month, and then one for July and one for August. After talking with Dr. Minahan and all the transition we're going to be going through in the next couple of weeks, it made more sense to have one in June and then two in August. So we're not losing any meetings, they're just being shuffled around a little bit. So with that schedule change, yes?
The board was kind enough to give me the ability to submit the, you know, the cover sheet and the resume to the board with 24 hours and then go ahead with the hires, so we don't lose folks. I take that as a global yes, but if you need to formalize it so Donna can do the same and isn't in tough votes, that would be great.
Okay. I'm fine with making that vote formal, and I'm fine with letting it stand that our vote that applied to Dr. Minahan to make those approvals be transferred to Ms. McGoon.
Do you need a motion?
Why don't we do a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Did you get that motion, Maura?
I got the motion, but I didn't get the second.
Mr. Spalding was the second, and it was unanimous.
Thank you.
Yep, okay, no problem. So with that schedule change, that means that it is the last meeting for Dr. Minahan and for Patrice and for Ed? Well, I'm hoping. I can't talk too long, because I try very hard not to be emotional, and I'm failing badly, tonight especially. There will be a celebration for them, so that we can all thank them for all of their wonderful work. So that is also on my to-do list. But I do want to thank you, it's really been a privilege, and I've learned so much from both of you. Okay. Thank you to everybody who showed up to support them tonight. Thank you for the round of applause for me. Thank you for the people that have emailed and called and that I have had conversations with. It's not easy. I would like to say that I don't take it personally, I don't think Bert meant it personally, but it's tough nonetheless. So thank you, I do appreciate it. And with that, I'm going to stop crying, and we need a motion to enter into non-public under 91A32I, consideration of matters relating to the preparation for and carrying out of emergency functions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Need a roll call vote, so, Bill?
Bill, welcome, senor.
Bert?
Bert Spalding, senior, aye.
Steve?
Steve Morris, aye.
And Jenna Darling, aye. I don't believe we are taking any action, but if we do, then we will obviously come back out into public, so.
There's an assumption that the superintendent will attend.
Yes, I assumed that he would attend.